How are you? Would you like to agenda?
I need that off.
You got it all?
Yeah.
Okay, our call of meeting of the Finance Advisory Committee for September twenty second to order. Uh, can we have a roll call, please?
Thank you Chair, um, just for the record, committee member David Leach is absent with an excused absence. So then we have a committee member Beishu.
Here.
Committee member Hargreaves.
Here.
Vice Chair Saldivar.
Here.
Chair Lee.
Present.
Thank you.
We'll move to agenda finalization and changes of updates.
None, no we don't.
Okay, here. And public comments, if I can turn it over to Clark to read the notice of participation.
Unless I'm mistaken, it doesn't appear that there are any members of the public in the room there. So, um, and I did not receive any comments for the record via email per our policy. So we could probably just go ahead and skip over public comments.
Oh, so it's not necessarily here. All right, thank you. Uh, we moved item two on the agenda approval of minutes. Um, have we any uh changes or comments on the on all the minutes? Well, I do have one comment and I apologize, but wanted to take it up with Ann as well. Sorry, see, that interim said event. And I made this point last week at the the uh city council meeting. But I think particularly for this uh committee, because of the importance to the public of um measure W and the use of those sales receipts, sales tax receipts. Uh, I'd like to ensure that the meetings that we have are recorded and that record goes out um to the public as does our other agendized meetings, I'm hoping, and that won't be a problem.
Um, I think we'll have to look at, well, I think it's two things. Right now, we don't have the capacity in this room to do recording unless we bring somebody into recorded, whether just audio recording or somebody else. I think with the we're doing a technology upgrade uh to the council chamber coming up, they'll also appear. So uh I can make sure for my team that to see what the capability of this room is. Um, or if that if we have to move to the chambers to uh, we need to make sure.
I think we we have um Tracy on on Zoom at the moment. I think that would be recorded anyway, that session.
Yep.
So if we can get that recording out. Because I, you know, we do get questions from the public about what's happening with this measure W. And I think it's important that we we make these as publicly as possible. Anyway.
Tracy, did you hear that? Are we recording this?
Yes, we are. I I actually spoke to Danny earlier before the meeting and and this meeting is being recorded.
Okay.
Thank you. So I take a motion to approve the minutes. How did you approve? Second. Thank you. Good.
Could could I get a clarification on who made the motion in the second?
Um, Antonio Beishu um made the motion and Jerry Hargreaves uh made the second.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we want to do a roll call though, Chair?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Uh, um. They uh committee member Beishu.
Yes.
Committee member Hargreaves.
Yep.
Vice Chair Saldivar.
Yes.
Chair Lee.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Moving on to agenda item number three. Uh, part A of that item, Finance Advisory Committee Mission Statement Update. We have a staff report.
So based on the last meeting that we have with all the April, one of the um request was to add, we had the agreed upon mission statement was to post it to our website. So we have done that. It's posted to the website. I believe on the next slide, you'll see what that looks like. There's the mission statement to approve and on the next next slide, that's what it looks like. So it's on the in the same area that all the other committee and commission mission statements are and the like and and with their composition and everything. So that we just wanted to share that with you. So we can make sure of a wall now.
Still, you have any comment, boss? Any comment on the slide? You'll switch to me. Thank you very much.
And you can see up above that that's how you get to navigate on the worst side.
Okay, now our comments, no need for public comments. Moving on to agenda item three B, presentation on measure W. And actually a twenty four, twenty five actuals and actually a twenty five sales of yeah, twenty five percent six. Um, but.
Oh, that's right. Twenty five, twenty six. Thank you. Um, so if you so basically, and you've had a castle of this, that there was an update after the April meeting that we went to council. That there were additional items that were added. So in the end, with respect to the original planned budget, because basically, if you remember, measure W is a half percent. And generally speaking, we plan for ten ten million dollars on our measure B, which is our one percent tax that is the general tax. So in this example, five billion dollars would be a half percent for a fiscal year. This is this was one quarter. Basically, take five million and divide by four, you get one hundred and fifty five million. So that was our generic budget that we started. In the end, as we went forth to council to actually tie that to what our expenditures were. Throughout the year, we took to council seven hundred and sixty three thousand dollars worth of budgeted rates or planned expenditures. And they were categorized as such with respect to the actual ambulance itself. Um, to include some basic outfitting. The additional staff for up to two months of six F T Vs. Um, additional ambulance equipment and supplies with respect to that fourth medic unit. The desert recreation district activation. And also the swim program, swim programs. So keep in mind, when we have the swim program, the process this will years. So part of it is in June and the rest of it is in July and early fall. And then the activation of staffing with respect to for the desert recreation district of the ramp up. Like for example, Cynthia, their program manager, she started on May twelve. They had hoped that she would start the first to make, but in her May twelve. So we have, so we have that generic budget for the D R D. And then separate from that, we also had a budget for up to two months of personnel with respect to the D R D for park personnel training and activation, that type of thing. So those are the five elements of that seven hundred and sixty two thousand. Any questions on the actual on the budget itself?
You know, I I don't have that. I predicted everything, but but that, can I get that?
Um. You're having to happen. Yes, we didn't have the one that had to go forward.
Thank you.
Your role. So any questions?
So so these are good numbers for us to report back to the committee and say, this is for your done measure.
This is about wait for the next slide because this is the budget for it. So this ties back to we we had a planned budget of one point two million, one point two five million. We actually took the council or five different requests that added up to seven hundred and sixty thousand. So on the next slide, what you'll see is where what we actually spent of that seven hundred and sixty three pounds. And so that's what we call actuals. So in the door, we did not receive one point two five million. We received one million and eighty thousand. So those are the revenues we received from uh the state. Then with respect to the expenditures, instead of spending seven hundred and sixty three thousand, we spent just over six hundred and forty seven thousand. And so for the same five categories on the previous line, these are the amounts that we spent. So basically, we spent about a hundred and five thousand. That's about a hundred and five hundred and six thousand dollars less than what we did. Council for.
So can you uh send a go over a couple of points with me because um we're budgeting for five million annually annually. So our estimate was one point two five. And in that quarter, in this quarter, we did actually purchase the ambulance.
We purchased all, these are all the expenditures that we purchased.
Right. So so we've got the fourth ambulance. How, moving forward, are we spending that extra money, that one point two five million in our estima every quarter?
If you can just time, we'll get there in subsequent slide.
Really? The other thing you can combine with that is I'm wondering what happens because uh one of the things that's happened in the last couple of years since the new fire chief promises. Uh, we're now generating positive revenue from the expenses. And so I'm wondering, how does that revenue get accounted for against this budget?
The revenue does not get accounted.
So that goes back into the general.
Correct. So from a revenues, so we're just sharing with you that we know what came in from C V T F A for those three months. A million and eighty thousand dollars. But it gets accounted for in the general fund, which is funded for a hundred. We have an actual separate fund for these expenditures.
Okay, so so the the measure W money is going is being accounted for separately. It's in the general fund. We know that because it can't go anywhere else. But it's being accounted for separately as a as a line item.
And so this is gets into a little bit more technical detail, but I'll share with you. In our financial system, we have measure W as a separate fund to account for these expenditures.
Okay.
But when we produce our government-wide accounting report every year, our um annual comprehensive financial report. That's what we call our government-wide statements. And in our government-wide statements, we have four different funds. Three different funds, I should say, that are merged into the general fund for those reporting purposes. This will now become one of those funds that will be merged in to the general fund for financial statement presentation purposes on what is published on our website.
From a practical standpoint, you track the revenues and the expenditure separately for measure B.
We do. We have, we have that visibility. And we have a separate object code in our financial system for the measure W versus the measure B. So we have three types of sales tax. We have the Bradley Burns General Sales Tax, and we have the account code or an object code difference. That. Then we also have an object code account code for the measure B, the one percent. And then we have a third account code object code for measure W. But all three of those go into the general fund as we know it from one time. The expenditures, though, are accounted for for the measure W in a separate fund. So that we have visibility of that, so that we don't co-mingle those. Because keep in mind, there's five pillars to measure W expenditures. And we'll talk about that on the on the budget in the next slide. Does that help then?
Yeah, yeah. There's still a little bit of uh information that I may be lacking, but it might come out down the slides.
Okay.
I have questions.
Yes, dear.
So can you um do you have any idea why the actual revenues are less than what we've budgeted?
Well, number one. Look at the seasonality of our ballot.
Yeah.
So generically, we're going to divide by four. But it's not going to happen that way. And I promise you, on the first quarter of our fiscal year, which is June, July, and August, is typically our weakest because look at our ballot.
Yeah.
So generically, we just divided by four. Um. However. There's also a ramp up with measure W. And that's where audit comes into play. And so we have a, we have a contract with a a third-party vendor that we had for years, and we had to update that contract for the new measure W. So after this first quarter of what the vendors in our city are reporting to the state. They will do comparative analysis of measure W to measure B. Because in theory, measure W should be fifty percent of measure B. But it's not. Because some vendors are ramping up with their sales tax with with respect to the the application of it. I mean, we know for a fact that vendors that we worked with in that first month of April. We were having to contact vendors on supplies that we were purchasing. That in their own systems, they had not implemented the half sent sales tax. So here we are contacting them and they 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 would modify it in their system. But that's just argue numbers of vendors. So it's it truly ties back to, because we're not involved in the sales tax mode with respect to reporting. Vendors report quarterly to the state. It's on the state and also a third-party vendor that we have a contract with to do audits. So that million and eighty thousand that we received for those three months is a little bit shy of fifty percent of what we receive for measure B. Because we know how much we receive for measure B. And this is typical. You can expect a ramp up for people whenever there's a change. And then we can also expect down the road, the potential for we we have quarters where we receive more measure, more than half of measure B, because we're trying to hedge up.
Just to to settle back on that because um our actual revenues from the half percent uh of the measure W was one point oh eight million. So we we did receive that money.
Yes.
And we didn't spend all of that money.
Correct.
So does that carry forward into future quarters? Does it get returned into the general fund and?
So we, so and we'll tie back to that because in essence, that will have a fund balance reserve in that in that in that separate fund.
Okay.
And so we will be able to accumulate reserves if for some reason we would have a year here that, because now that the quarter is done, we deal in years. So in this new fiscal year, if we would have the need to spend more than what our revenue would be. We know that we have reserves.
But so going forward, then we can assure the public that there will be a reserve in that separate fund from measure W and it won't get co-mangled with the rest of.
You are correct, I remember.
And I think that was discussing a couple of special things, like, you know, what happens when we do like, we're going to be buying animals every year, you know, we're not going to be, you know, putting community centers every year. So at one point, we should have a reserve of one. Four or.
But that, but that reserve, that's tied to our overall fleet breadth, so that you know, and tied to that, we account for that over in the general fund. Right now, in measure W, this was a one-time runners. So any future trucks or ambulances we purchase will be conscious outside of this. Tied to our regular depreciation schedule and our regular plan to to replace our. So any other questions on actions? So that gives your bird's eye view of in the end, a million and eighty thousand dollars versus six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. So we have um about four hundred thousand plus in reserves for that first quarter. So on the next slide. So let's talk about the new year, the year that we are coming into with respect to FY twenty five, twenty six, this is September, so we're now in our third month um of the new year. So this goes back to that same what I talked about before. If we're going to budget ten million for measure B, we're going to budget five million for measure W. And these are those five pillars. So tied to the fire department and emergency services, a million dollars. Road improvements, a million dollars. Parks and recreation combined, keeping in mind that a million for the parks maintenance and a million for the recreation programs. But they're both for the D R D. And D R D, Rick has been our focal, primary focal point with D R D. And they're doing a great job in separating their divorcing and detailing their divorcing. So that we know what is being spent on parks personnel, what has been spent on recreation programs or recreations. So two million with respect to parks and recreation. And then community center debt reserve at a minute. Yes, sir.
So we all worked on measure W and we told people a million dollars for police to be buddy lost the fire. We literally told them, so I see, and I I was at a meeting recently, it was a million and a half for parks and rack uh for D R D, and then I saw five million for the reserve. I thought, well, we're just kind of reading how this goes, but that we did tell.
And that's a curiosity question because I don't know, maybe Ann can tie back from our standpoint. The five pillars dating back to when we had these meetings in here, like the the chief of fire team, Chief Contreras. Uh, Director Contr- 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 Parelo Kane. Um, and then we had the D R D presentation. I don't know what happened with respect. It sounds like police got buried into it and inferred as a result of fire because based on what's out there with the five pillars. Indirectly, it doesn't tie back to, directly, it doesn't tie back to.
I think a lot of us were working with the pack also. So what, I mean, we did with the.
I think it was a communicate communication breakdown because um I never heard um the police.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they didn't do a presentation we worked on.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, that is incorrect.
I was, I was the one hosting those launches with uh with you. Or um, so we were, this was the, the pitches were really easy, so it was just divided into five, so.
Well, I think they still have some on complete.
Yeah, we were without duty fire, police at every beginning. And we, it was all divided into five pieces. And that, that's fine. I mean, I've I've just seen that this is what we actually told people in uh community centers, in in their cellhouses or their gateways. And with often fire into the spin off uh with uh council members that didn't have a draft, so that's just so.
I I don't think I was ever part of the official message we got from council or from from the uh city management. So.
This is always, these five pillars have been always been.
It's always been this.
Yeah, okay.
And the fifth, and the fifth pillar being um the community center debt resource. So let's say, and and currently, and that's what the the next presentation will be about, that Ann will talk about with respect to the community center facilities study. We had plans out there then, okay, if we're able to park a million dollars to cover debt that if we go out and do a bond issue. Twenty-year bond issue, thirty-year bond issue, whatever, like some of our other bonds have been here in the city. What kind of principal would we garner in order to be able to set aside a million dollars of measure W money to pay that bond interest and principal every year? And so that's the fifth pillar is the million dollars. Keep in mind, this is a budget. So I can share with you that next month, when we brief city council on our actuals. In theory. Based on that ten million and five million. Look at what's going on in the economy outside around us. People aren't buying, people aren't necessarily spending, we're hearing this kind of thing. For the, we we have not, the highest we've ever achieved with measure B, and I give it this one year, is nine point seven million dollars. And that's what the basis of the ten million was, was the, we had two years in a row where we achieved nine point seven million. This year, with respect to measure B, we're at nine million dollars. So to share with you all that, this will get briefed to council next month at the second council meeting in October with all the things that were briefing because we're still in audit mode. This is week two of our audit um that is ongoing. So when all is said done, if this year is a nine million dollar year for measure B. It's probably going to be about a four and a half million dollar year for measure W. So the budget can be the budget. But when you then tie back to a forecast, I think that's the next slide.
Um, didn't we talk about this before the the um we had to do this peculiar swap arrangement to pay the D R D because the D R D then had come out of general fund.
Right now, we're paying D R D fully like directly. So because the annexation still hasn't completely gone through yet, it's still doing whatever it's doing. We're paying a direct bill to them, but it's coming out of measure W.
We're not paying anything out of the general fund. What I believe you might be referring to is once we go through the full annexation, which hasn't happened yet.
No.
Because we have two agreements. We have an annexation agreement that will tie back through county.
Right.
And LAFCO, but then we have a direct services reimbursement agreement. So right now, we're just operating under the direct services reimbursement agreement. So today, all expenditures have been paid out of measure W fund.
And and I think, Danny, what you're talking about is when we determined like what percentage we were going to give directly to the D R D through the annexation, there's the small amount that everyone will pay the I forget what it is, four hundred bucks or something. And then we had to decide how much of our uh property tax do we want to put to there that would kind of be the equivalent of this. So that that was the switch that while we're collecting measure W in through sales tax through the annexation, they can only take that through property tax. So we're just
Right.
paying the equivalent amount um in a percentage of our property taxes going to go to the district for these funds.
That refresh my mind.
Yeah.
But yes, the property debt bit was true. Um, but we did discuss at the time that that um uh measure W potentially, because of the changes in in sales. Um, may not fully meet that amount, which is going to be committed for property tax.
So, but that's where it ties back to the percentage that we commit from property tax. Will be a conservative percentage. It will not be a high percentage yet because that's why we have two groups. We know that even when we annex in to the D R D through the LAFCO process, we will still be using the second agreement. And that second agreement calls for us to reimburse them on a quarterly basis. So this year, what we're doing to accommodate, we're actually reimbursing them on a monthly basis so that they're not caught holding the bag this year. So they're actually sending in invoices for parks, sending in invoices for programs on a monthly basis, and Rick is reconciling that and working with his counterpart in D R D.
Do you remember what the percentage of property taxes that we're going to give to?
We talked, I remember from twelve to fifteen percent.
So say it was fifteen percent that we, I just can't remember the time, I have a bit of a good enough. So say in the collection of property tax, it collected a million dollars, but our cost for G R D would be a million and five. Then we'd make up the difference to that with measure W. So.
But behind the scenes, we will do what we call a transfer in and a transfer out, and we will record that million dollars in the measure W fund. So that it won't just hit the general fund. We will do a transfer mechanism behind the scenes so that all those costs, like in Ann's example, if it's a million dollars and it's five hundred thousand dollars comprised of quarterly payments. It will all show up in the measure W fund.
I I guess what I was getting at with the question was, you know, suppose we know the the property values have gone down, it's more property on the market. Uh, potentially, the snowbirds have decided they're not coming back. So so if the sales revenue does decline. Um. Are we going to be in a hole with measure W on that, the the committed million dollars to cover the D R D expenses?
It could happen, but we are also covered from a standpoint, we can scale back if we need to with respect to our needs. Because our need might need to be adjusted based on if there were another great recession or something like that.
And that's not just measure uh W, that's any, you know, city program.
Correct. So we might have, and the other good news, so that if you think if something happened. If we had too much that went to them from a property tax standpoint. The the agreement ties back to that if they get too much in that year and not the million and the five hundred in Ann's example. Let's say we send a million, but they only incurred eight hundred thousand, they owe us two hundred thousand.
Oh, okay.
So we're covered on that spring, something like that.
Great, thank you.
So as a result, if it is nine million. Our revised forecast for this fiscal year would be adjusted downwards to be nine hundred, nine hundred, one. Forecast for this fiscal year would be adjusted downwards to be nine hundred, nine hundred, one point eight nine. Just makes sense, it's the value. Yes, sir.
Okay, and um how much did we used to pay for our D R for the trust needs?
For the parks maintenance, we actually have more parks people through D R D than we have before, so we're spending. So from a personnel standpoint, over in public maintenance, over at the yard, over a cutting road. We have. Of our ten worker bees out there, we have three of those working parks. And that was not. Exactly, so that's why I said, so we had three F T Es that that kind of the labor category. And then our couple hundred thousand dollars of supplies. That kind of thing, we also have outsourcing contracts above and beyond the supplies, we also have utilities, so. For digital because we retained internet in this agreement, they that's that's the nineteen thing and we've retained that in internet cost of the parks. But when you tie that to uh water and you tie back to electricity. And there is no gas. But when you tie that to utilities, we've gone through an effort, Rick and company have gone through an effort of. Working with D R D and the utility providers to get those changed over to D R D. Um with respect to that, so it's people. Materials and supplies. Contracting out, like we have vendors that have done work first in our parks. And our utilities. But all in the end. We're we're gonna end up spending more. And hopefully. Our constituents see that our parks.
It it is it is being very good and some of the eaters may say here's the matter, don't you know, are flipping the pace same, it's kind of. It's kind of working.
And and you know, I mean that, yeah, a week ago Saturday, I wanted to go by because I wanted to see what the new coffee looked like over there at Sandlerie Red. And yay, it's the only coffee that has a drive-through, that really fits our population. But when I was done, I went up through your homes, I went to all the different points, the south end, the midpoint and the north end point. And that's why the park look great. So next slide. So this is the leading to the community center update, just to tie back to um. The meetings that have been happening that have are ongoing with a professional service. This firm that's heard for architectural research. Anne is the primary person, so now that she's the big cheese on the block, she also has this, she's still very disallowed.
This is Victor, this is all Victor.
So with respect to the um. For recognition of the community center options, it ties back to the various kinds of things that Anne's going to discuss. With respect to the community engagement, site recommendations, funding scenarios. And to establish a community center debt reserve, so like for example. In our minds right now, that four hundred thousand dollars that we have as a reserve. We're planning on parking that as a community center reserve. Because it just makes sense, we're going to need to accumulate reserves in measure W because. In the end, that million dollars of debt service won't get us all that. And we're currently working those numbers, I had a meeting with our bond council this past Friday. And um we have had some financial discussions that Anne and Victor and myself have been part of, part of, we have another coming up this Thursday. To talk more. But we're going to have to dig deep in our pockets. To find. Dollars. For the community center.
That's not just dollars that we can fit together here, but we're going to have to look at, you know, whether. Grant funding is available, um you know. Potential state and federal, whatever um other buckets of funding that we can um put together because. Whether we do new construction, whether we do. For renovation of an existing facility, those. Construction costs are just. And so what we're uh we'll be actually going to council on October sixth. And sort of beginning to have a little bit of discussion with them about, you know, what are the costs involved, if we're looking at. Twenty five thousand square foot facility as the adaptive reuse versus new construction. What are kind of all our costs uh in order to do that, it kind of gets interaction from the council too of. If if you know the, if we can get this much money from measure W. Uh if we have to look for these other sources of funding, you know, what is a realistic size, because I think. For the community and certainly for me as I would, it's like, I want the Cadillac, I want like, I want the. Fifty thousand square foot, I want the gymnasium, I want all the full um flexible space, I want all of it. But can we afford all of it, at least at once? Uh that's what we're trying to get into some realistic numbers for council so that we can um. Find what should what should's gonna be best option, which is the option that we can. Get to the quickest, uh that also meets the community needs, accessibility of being your population centers and all of that. So October sixth uh during study session, our consultants are gonna be coming down. Invite you to uh to join us for that, to hear uh what's going on. And I didn't even part of our state poor meeting yet. Antonio, you've been through one, so I'm gonna walk through some of the slides for that uh kind of as part of. My presentation, unfortunately, it's not in the same thing, but. Yeah.
So just before you start.
Yes.
But um uh just something Kevin was mentioning. Uh and you're talking to to people about potential funding. Um. What is the, what's the ratio between? The the amount of money capital we need. And the amount we can raise on the bond, Jen.
So so that's what we're looking at and our target is a million dollar debt reserve. So based on, and it also depends on the time and. So. Rates are starting to look better, so depending upon where likely from the timing of. Going out for that bond issue and once we do that bond issue. And one has been part of when we've actually gone out. With bond council and that three to four month period that we have from the beginning until it actually gets issued. It all depends on what happens during that three to four months from a timing standpoint, the good news is in the last month, rates were starting from down. And that's helping us, so at one point in time, we were looking at. At a twenty year period of for uh for um. They never paid the bond debt back. At one point in time, when rates were as worse as they were, we were only looking at giving ten million dollars.
Right.
That's not a lot. But it's a start and as Anne talked about. Are there other types of opportunities, we also will look at. Yeah, yeah, we're up to thirteen right now based on the marketplace. So depending on life, thirteen is better than ten, but I'd like fifteen. You know, it all depends on the time, but we'll also look at other funds, then we have to see if any of our other funds. Would be able to qualify or contribute. To um to our community center for that type of endeavor. In addition to the grant opportunities that Anne talked about, because that's definitely something that we have out there that we're scouring as well in on the.
Well, I have partnerships, I hope.
Yes.
And naming rights. Think all of those are opportunities, we still haven't sold the naming rights to the athlete, I mean, I'm sure we can get a. Maybe a few hundred thousand a year for that. So.
All those options are on table, absolutely. So I'm just gonna go a little bit of this, just to kind of give you a sense of where we're at, this is a a presentation that our. Folks have been doing as we started to do some of our community outreach. Uh we've had a variety of different stakeholder groups that we started to meet with, uh. We will do another rounding list as well um as we're getting information back. But repeating. Uh so as we've talked about, I mean, this group knows about measure W, so we don't really have to go too much into this. But we did do the uh R F P for the community feasibility study. And what we're looking at through this process is reviewing the demand for a community center, identifying potential locations, uh. Looking at reuse of existing commercial sites versus new construction. Uh looking at and really getting into more of the upfront and then the ongoing operational costs. And then potential scale, potential scalability for phasing opportunities, so maybe if we start this out, we only have. Can fund construction of something that's maybe twenty five or thirty thousand to the fee. And looking at if we um get a facility that we can then build it out later uh with additional funding. So those are all the different kinds of options that we've been looking at and which our consultant is uh exploring for us.
And Ken, I can interject, one of the good things with initially there was a talk of. For this contract for this feasibility study, we have to take it out of measure W. And that's where we were able to identify another fund that we actually do this ninety nine thousand dollar contract, it's not this. This feasibility study is not coming out of measure W, it's coming out of another fund.
So within your packets, because it's a little bit easier than to see up here, uh you can see what our timeline is, so we started this uh project back in August. Uh late July, early August, we will be going through December. And right now, we are in the um center assessment and community outreach phase, so. Uh staff, uh we have a project team that have been meeting with our consultants, uh we have a number of sites that we have identified. Have been assessing the pros and cons of. Whether those would be acceptable sites based on availability, capacity, access, parking. Um and then the development costs. We on September sixteenth uh started our uh community outreach, actually as. Yes, and properties that I brought for you, uh we have this on our social media now, um we have a. One opportunity for candy cred input is through our online survey, so there's an online survey that's available in both English and Spanish that. Any resident can go online and do. Uh we can also make that information available as a paper survey, um if individuals don't have as much comfort doing this uh through. Through the computer. We also have the same information um. That is available on the uh survey and kiosk format, I'll talk about that a little bit more. But if you can go to the next slide, uh you can see that this is where we're at, so we are still in the master plan phase. Uh we're looking at facilities, we're looking at costs, uh we're looking at understandings what the community wants in a center. To try to plan out the future of how we um get there, and so. Part of the extensive community engagement we're doing is really hearing from the community about what. What type of center do we want, you know, are there particular types of activities that you want there, do you want to play sports inside, or do you want to have dance classes or. Uh cooking lessons or whatever it happens to be. Uh from that input, it will help. Like lay out the type of spacing needs, which will also then uh lead to what size facility uh we want and what those costs could be. Uh so we are just in that planning stage right now, and once we have um the study done, our hope is to have. Kind of the top three facilities um available for the council and the community to discuss. To then uh narrow down to one that we really want to pursue uh development on. Um so that's kind of where we're at right now, then from that, we'll come up with more of the conceptual designs, the architecture. And then ultimately add to uh billboard and construction, so we're just a bit.
Uh in in terms of the costing. Uh I know we're not quite that. The consultants or the team that you've got. Um is the big consideration of uh comparative costing from other organizations, I remember that. The D R D uh gave Pace uh good few years back now, but. Uh when we're doing measure K, they gave us uh an estimate. Um of the cost of building the India Center for something. And and what that would be now.
The console that we're using uh is. Currently been doing a lot of construction projects on their own and have good data about um. Sort of cost per square foot and uh they have talked to D R D about what they have. Spent on me, this D R D is part of our project team, so they are looking at all of that and. Uh when we talk to council, we're gonna do some sort of five level numbers of uh the construction or reading on cost. Per square foot um for public different types of uses, so we're gonna give the council just kind of a. High level presentation about what are some realistic costs, so they kind of include everything, so for the. Facility, either the T I's or the construction or the. Um furniture, uh you know, everything related to it, so that'll be part of the. High level presentation, uh that'll be happening October sixth.
Yeah, I mean, the the. The construction cost is fairly easy to to calculate, but then. You've got to consider equipment costs and D R D has to then take on staffing costs as well. So all those will be in that presentation.
Um not. There isn't gonna be that in depth and fully in this first one, but uh there is gonna be some high level discussion about just the um. Operational cost and the construction cost, not some or the construction, um renovation cost, not so much the operations in this. This first discussion. Um but that's where that's where we're at right now, but D R D is an active partner in this and working as part of this staff team.
I have a question, yes, you please explain again how you're doing the community outreach, so this flyer, is it. Is it part of the uh discovery table city? It's going out or or.
It's been on discovery table city, I think, if uh. If not, it'll be by, I think I'm the doing the newsletter this week, so I'm pretty sure it's been in there. Um I believe it's going to be in the upcoming environmental survey that uh Public Works does, uh have prior information. We are doing uh we are kiosk events, we'll talk about it a little bit later in the presentation, but we have. All the information that's in the survey, we have on uh boards. And our first event that we did was Saturday's Hispanic uh Heritage Lot Party, so we had staff out there with the boards, it's basically you have five. Snickers and you put on the type of either activity or type of facility that you want. So it's really, you know, it's very visual, it's all in English and Spanish, we had two bilingual staff out at the event, so we should we could uh communicate with the residents and. Uh the consultants are going to be out here doing some additional events. We have the kiosks currently, uh we have one at the senior center and one at the library. And then uh we can, they're mobile, so we can take them up to other uh locations as well. Uh we have planned events um to have the pop-up kiosk. At well, not at September twentieth, uh we're going to have it again at the Movies in the Park, um and that is on October seventh. And then we also uh will plan it to have it at Spooktacular, uh so we will have it um. During the Spooktacular, that's yourself, and that's focus more on what kind of activity do you want. Uh and to take place of your beyond baby center, Rick, if you could move on uh since.
Yeah, I I took the survey then, I thought you covered the whole.
Yeah, so you can go to the next one, good, so uh sorry, one more. So this is what the survey looks like online and this is what the boards look like, so. You can um you can choose up to five items or activities, so. Uh you could just go through and see, you know, I want. You know, a community center that. Very slow, um has space for like extended learning or um for formal events or team programming. And you just put your five dots on what you think it is or what what you think um. Are the top priorities for the city. And then we asked the question in a different way too of what kind of spaces, so. I might not look at activities, but I might want a space that, you know, I can do arts and crafts or a fitness or dance studio. Zumba was getting a lot of hits uh at the event uh this weekend. So and then all that information we collected is part of this, uh so in person, online, uh we have it. Um the standouts that people wanted um in writing, so those are some of the key things, and then we're still uh looking at other events, I think the. Consultants are coming out early October, the same week that we're doing the council meeting. I think they have a couple of meetings set up at like the middle schools to bring out to the to kids. Um and then we're also looking for other opportunities that we can um bring out in the community and make sure we have opportunity to. Okay, good input for messages. So if you could go back a little bit to where we started, so. Uh just right here, so while you can't see this, uh it's kind of tiny on screen, uh this is the. The different locations around the city that currently have. Um some type of recreational facility, whether it's a city park, uh boys and girls clubs are there, the schools. So this is kind of current assets around the community that have either recreational purpose, uh arts and culture purpose, uh schools. That we were, you know, looking at to see where the current resources are at in the community. That's true. And then part of the other community analysis that our consultants are looking at is. Where are these assets and where are population centers, so they looked at uh the different um census tracts. And what's the population density within those tracts, and so we have that as another uh layer of assessment of. You know, where are the people in the community? In the community that could benefit from having a community center nearby.
As you have, you indicated Salvation Army on slide back there was. Uh, it's obviously a private organization, it's not.
Right. No, we identified both public and private uh resources.
So that reminded me of a uh city council discussion a year or two back. And um council member Gutierrez had been talking to. Uh, to them about um use of some. The land which is city land, which adjoins their property. And they were interested in potentially partnering to create a swimming pool. Um, so I'm only mentioning because I I would loop that back into the discussion at some point. And maybe talk to Ca- uh, Councilman Gutierrez again to to see if that is still something there in person being, because. You and I probably, we all probably know that we ain't getting a pool. Yeah. Um, at least now in this phase, I I had a quick look around for other cities of our similar size to us. And who put in pools? And in twenty-five to twenty-ten, around about that timeframe, they were paying. Between nine point six and twelve point eight million, just a report. So I don't think they got any cheaper. Um, and and so, you know, if there's some other uh organization that's willing to partner with us or or we can do something with. To create a public facility like that, I think it's worth examining that.
No, absolutely. Um, part of this has been looking at, I mean, obviously we've talked to the senior center, we've spoken of boys and girls club. I know that the uh Salvation Army has been invited to some of the stakeholder meetings. I have not been able to make all of them. So I'm not sure if they've participated in that or not yet, but we are looking at those because, you know, it could be an opportunity of to uh. Have a shared space that has multiple tenants or different pieces. So, um.
I think that that actually came up in one of the focus group meetings that I attended. Um, uh, uh, talk about the senior center at all, but I hope it's clear, I believe it's clear. That this will be a city facility and not part of the senior center or attached to the senior center in some way.
I I think those are all open for discussion. I don't think, I mean, this is a senior or this is obviously a senior or a city facility. But is there some future partnership that? There was like a larger center that had the senior center as part of it, the city's part of it. I think those are the kind of partnerships that are all to be explored.
I can see that coming. If it wasn't coming out of measure W funding, but. For the senior center, which is a separate organization to be getting measure W funding. That would seem to me to be a problem.
I don't think it's saying that they would get funding, but if there was a center that if they brought capital to the table to help uh. You know, with construction costs, if they had their own operational costs. Um, you know, is there a need for two large community centers in the city?
I don't know. Currently the senior center is tiny.
Yes.
It has one multipurpose, well, two multipurpose rooms.
Yeah.
Uh, so it it's not a a recreation center, which is really what is needed. Um, so if if they want to co-locate, I I can see an argument for that. I would want to get away from, and and they went through this process themselves a few years ago when they changed the name of the senior center. Because they wanted to get away from the 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 link between senior center and old people. And I don't think we want this so to see branded as an old people's establishment.
No, this is for the full community.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And we would, we would ensure that we would not spend any measure W money. On that aspect.
Okay.
So anyway, so other things that we've been talking about uh that C four has brought to the table is. Been just kind of the best practices and trends in community and recreation center development. And the topics that they've shared with us is that uh as communities are looking to build or. Uh, consider uh recreation facilities, that they're very community driven. Uh, they're really defined by the community and the community's needs in developing what those facilities and spaces look like. Uh, they're multi-generational and acceptable to all. So to your point that we're not building. A facility that is only already going to be used by one group of our community. It is intended to be available. Accessible for all ages, all groups. Uh, they have a variety of act recreational activities. Um. Uh, one of the things that they're really talking about is that, you know, community centers. They've changed over time where it might be, you know, you go in and register, you go to your activity, but. In many of the new constructions that they're doing, uh, there's a lot of space for just socialization or. People to hang out or have a conversation or have a coffee or work on a project together. And so. Some of the new trends that they're seeing is that there are more of these kind of connected spaces, which also I think. Contribute to that multi-generational, multicultural um aspect that people are just interacting with people and you can't avoid it. So uh, that's one of the space ideas uh that's on the on the questionnaire. Uh, multi-use and adaptable, having spaces that have movable walls or that can be transformed or can be used for different purposes. Certainly, I think there is a need for that, but I just bet you the senior center only has small spaces. There's all the bigger space with the exception of the amphitheater. So there is definitely a need for meeting space, conference space, uh, rental space, uh. You know, other than um, I have one major hotel here, you know, there's really no other space that you wanted to do a rental for like a quinceañera. Uh, of, you know, small wedding or something like that. So having adaptable spaces, I think not only. Uh, increases program opportunities, but also potential revenue generating opportunities. Uh, certainly we'd like to look at sustainable design or any type of amenities that help reduce the uh the ongoing operational costs. Of the uh, the new center. Uh, it has efficient operations and then lastly. That has a resiliency or resource center component. In many communities, the community center is also the cooling center or warming center. Usually don't have to worry about that too much. Uh, sometimes even become a sheltering site if necessary. And so uh, looking at this facility, um, because also there's times where there's grant funding opportunities for that. If we have it identified and locally, you know, should uh use for the facility like this. So we talked about the engagement, the online survey. Uh, again, this is in kind of the information that we have on the boards. There's also the opportunity that uh individuals can write their own goals on, you know, for what they'd like to see in the community center. And we're starting to see some of that uh on on Saturday when we're out there. We want, so we've, we've gone through these already. And then as a project management team, we also uh. Went through some of our uh goals for the process, for the project and the outcomes. And as we've. Started doing this, we're soliciting that input from each of the stakeholders that we're talking to. And then I think as we were doing around now, but a little bit later on, we're gonna kind of come back and do another round of community engagement. And uh, we don't pick up any of you on that or we miss you, uh, there'll be more opportunities to provide input. I think that's, this was just kind of uh. Exercises, but while we have you here, um, we do have some of the questions that we've been asking uh our residents and our stakeholders. And if you were to define what you would like to see a new recreation center, how would you define us being successful in building new recreation center? What would that look like?
We all attended the meetings already.
Okay, you all. So. You have it.
The one that you had on on online or Zoom?
Yeah.
We got, no, I knew.
With it. Oh. So is there, if there's anything else you'd like to add about, what would your definition of a successful bathroom look like?
I think what you kind of put out there is is uh. Aren't good ideas. I just want you to add about being together or the social space. And. Getting in where a place where people can hang out, that's just going. Here's Zuga in the meeting. Um, so. And also, again, that it be. Uh, there be spaces in programs for all ages and all abilities and disabilities. So those things kind of covered. So I agree with this. Right, did you hear?
Yeah, yeah, so I was gonna say multi-generational. I mean, that's true success when you're able to encompass, you know, from the little wee kids all the way to, you know, the, you know, seniors. And for everybody that has access to it. I know I go a lot to the new community center out there on Springs, my son boxes there. And it 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 almost feels like there's a flow of different ages coming in. Obviously, you get there a little bit early. And the pickleball players are leaving, uh, you know. You know, and then uh the exercise people are coming in with their thirties. And then all the, as soon as schools off, five o'clock, all you see, all the young kids, you know, doing different activities from karate. Boxing, you know, uh, chessboard games. So, and I think that's a success because you're targeting everybody, you know, so. So I think that would be, I mean, I'm really excited about this because. We need a space for for everybody.
Uh, let's see, I have other questions up here. Uh, if you were to be asked, what were the most important features or amenities that you think should be included in our center? What would that be? They talked a little bit about kind of the gathering spaces and the social spaces. Is there anything else that? You would really like to make sure that our center has for our community?
I'm just gonna repeat one that uh somebody wrote to me recently, that was a uh, an indoor walking track. The, the, yeah, yes, yes, so my, anyway, that's not it. Um, yeah, uh. A flexible space, but I think we need that flexible space to encompass all the. Court games, because of our environment. The things that people like to do outside, they can't do for half the year. So we want to make sure that those things put in. That would be pickable, basketball.
Yeah, and I also, I think sports activities is key. Uh, especially, especially now this, you know, day and age where kids in Ghana and do, uh, you are gonna end up. You know, getting in trouble and stuff and I work with, I promise youth. And it's getting the same by the activity sports activities or being, you know, football.
Uh, let's see. Are there any cultural or community specific considerations that should be reflected in the facility design?
When you say that, what does that exactly mean by?
Well, we have a majority Hispanic community. We are part of a tribal re- reservation lands. Is there anything um that you think should be reflected in the facility's design that are reflective of the community for any of our residents?
It's mainly you say that I had a meeting at Puchillo that the day, you know, going on, you know, they had all these, you know, this murals. Uh, Spanish heritage and all this stuff. It was really inviting, you know, it was really inviting, but at the same time, uh, you know. Uh, it can't be the sole focus, you know, but it is, it is inviting to. The predominant demographics of what we have here in the city.
I think one of the, one of the key issues and we don't do enough of is to ensure that. Not just exterior, but also interior signage is finally. We should include Spanish signage. Directional signs within the facility and so on.
Well, I don't want to take up more of your time, but I think um, this, you know, this is really helpful. I will send us off to our consultants as well to be added in. And then uh, like I said, I think they're gonna be planning some other bigger community events. And we'll make sure that I, if there's, you know, any needs that come up, I'll be on the ones that are scheduled, I'll, yes.
Any other comments on this agenda item?
Great presentation.
And this is basically received in five. If they're growing.
Yeah. We're not doing any photos of them, but we will move on.
Other than you need to vote for what you'd like to see at the community center.
We'll move on to agenda I and four star comments and for A's committee member attend script or um to be received or filed. I guess. Um, any comments?
Thank Tracy for letting you all know this is gonna be a standard portion of all of our committee. Committee and council meeting agendas now.
And then um, agenda I have five committee member comments. We go down the line here. I'll check, but if. All right, you have one.
Oh, that's, and what I already said, thank you, Ian.
Um, just a thank shipyard well for the service to this committee. And that's it. I'm glad to be here.
And by sure, I say thank you so much for being so transparent and uh. Educating us, at least for me, like I'm a three-year-old, it's, I grasp it, you know, and it's all see it to this.
Okay, I don't need to say anything nice to you.
Well, I did lots of my.
Yeah. But I should.
But thanks to all the silent partners we had here today.
So as an F Y, I would respect to for plenty purposes. What we anticipate is potentially in in the January, February timeframe, because. For our next meeting, we will actually have our first quarter of data. For measure W revenues. We will have that by the end of November. So December is a tough month for me per se, but we also will have to do analysis. Despite where we're at. Um, so I broadly hit it around the January timeframe, it's normally when we have our whole planning strategic planning meeting. Uh, near the end of the month, so we anticipate um having a finance advisory meeting, probably the January.
Sounds good. If if we can just, um, because schedules always seem to be difficult if we get some dates out as early as possible.
Will do, and and that's something that we'll probably do in the late November or late December time, and that's also the reason why we're not even trying to push ourselves. To try to do something December, December is just a problem.
Anything else? In which case, I move to agenda meeting. Thank you very much.